Alright. So we should be. Live, maybe? Cool, I think we're good. Dope. So what's going on everybody? Welcome. Today, just gonna kinda mess around a little bit with. Maybe streaming a little bit and. Just kinda see. Okay, perfect. That actually works the way I needed to. Um, yeah, just gonna be doing a little bit of study. I thought maybe I would do just a little bit of. I don't know. I don't know what. Um, probably, I think I'm gonna do some ino.jp, maybe some Duolingo. Like this isn't like a real intensive study, more so just kinda hanging out, just trying to. Get a little bit of extra time in, so. Say that I don't like having both earbuds on it like freaks me out. So. Let me just change the title. What's up Ice Hound? Ethan Entertainment, what's up? What is going on? So, um. Think what I may do is start with some. Start with some, I might do like a couple of flashcards on ino.jp, cuz I actually really like the. Kind of the IP there, so to speak, and then maybe do some Duolingo, maybe do a little bit of immersion, not really sure. But, uh, yeah, so let's go, let me. Save that, pop over here so I can see some comments if anybody. Asks and yeah, alright, let me go here. Let me pop up this to this. I do have Duolingo up, um, cuz I probably will mess with that a little bit and then. I've got some ino.jp up. As well, which I probably should have signed into. Let me. Do that real quick. I don't know if I actually know my login information. It's not that. What's up Logan Davis? Alright, so. What's up DMG on Insta about Iceland? Ooh, sweet. Sweet, sweet. Yeah, so, um, I'm actually gonna make a video about this soon. Um, the next thing that I'm going to be doing is doing a little bit of study. In Iceland. So I'm gonna be going to, I'm gonna be going to Iceland. Around the Mayish area, and so I'm gonna be studying a little bit of Icelandic. Not like the way that I studied Japanese, like not at all, but, um. Yeah, it's, I'm gonna be. Let's see, you guys probably want the bigger, like the screen bigger. But yeah, so I wanna study a little bit of, uh, a little bit of Icelandic. And try to set up some stuff while there, that way I'm not just going into it blindly. Have you had good results with Duolingo? Hmm, I don't know if I'd say I've had good results, what I think, I think it's really good reading practice. That's what I think. I don't really, like, so, which I'll show you when I go through Duolingo here in just a few, but I don't necessarily use it. In regards to, uh. Like I don't, I don't necessarily use it to learn, it's more so just to get a little bit more of the language, like in me versus like. Pop up YouTube and try to find a two-minute clip, like if I don't have a lot of time. I can, I'll just do, I'll literally just do a lesson on Duolingo, so, alright, let's do, uh, let's do some cards here. Now, if you're, I really like the system. Now, I'm not 100% sure how it's gonna work. On the computer, I always use this on my phone, but I know that you can do that here. So. Alright, wonder if that came through, let me find out. Alright, the audio is not coming through, of course, so. Let me stop sharing the screen. Share the screen again. Seems like last time I had a massive issue with this. That's alright, application window you can't, but I can do. There we go. Now it should work. You guys should hear it now, let me back out and then go back in and see if that works. It's pretty loud, alright. Sorry, just making sure this is all good. Perfect, okay, how loud is that? Okay, I don't know, I don't think it's as loud to you guys, honestly, this seems loud too. We're still trying to work on getting this to where it doesn't deafen you guys, alright. So, let me pop up here, that's cool, I wanna go to Iceland so bad, yeah, Iceland is. An area that I've wanted to go to for a long, long time, um. I really love. Kind of that entire area of the world and Iceland just happens to be a place that. I can go, they're lifting restrictions for travel, if you can show a, uh. If you can show that you're vaccinated or you can have a negative test, but, um. I've, I, at that point will be vaccinated, I have my first round and I'm getting my second round vaccination here soon. So, um, yeah, I'll be able to go to Iceland, which is pretty, pretty cool, alright, so. Let's go to, uh, let's just review, well. Let's do all, so this should be max size, alright, so this is gonna be two new words. And then eight reviews, this is all gonna be really easy because I'm just starting the ino stuff out, um, I just, I prefer it to Anki. I guess let the hate roll, uh, but I actually find this system to be much more enjoyable and less stressful for me than Anki. Obviously not with like sentence cards and stuff, but just for vocabulary, so. I get you, to give offer. I wonder if you can hide the English. Just out of curiosity. Transcription, Japanese study mode, shortcut keys, alright, I don't guess you can, but, okay, that's all good though. Except, okay, so. Doesn't Anki have ino decks? It does, but I just don't like. It's hard to explain, man, I just, I, I just can't like, even though I've paid for Anki and I'll do sentence cards sometimes, man, but I still just don't. Really care for it overall, like I get excited about it for just a little bit and then I just stop caring. Cole, like it's really weird, like this, I struggle with Cole, and I don't know why. Cole Chisai, so. Such small letters, okay, Cole Chisai. Okay, yeah, that one's kind of a tough one for me. More is, uh. Yeah, now one thing I don't like, one thing I will say is, I don't like the. Desktop version of the reviews because it only gives you the one sentence, as to where on the phone you can scroll through and see the next one, so I don't like that. That's kinda lame, but. See, that's, that's. Womichan up here. Here we go. Naku Naru, To Be Lost, alright. That's, I guess that's the other argument too, is this is, this isn't always gonna be like, kind of the idea of like a plus one. But it is what it is. Alright. Doesn't have foreigners, yeah, there are a few foreigners in this town. She's listening to the radio. Yeah, a lot, like I said, a lot of the stuff in the beginning, this is gonna be. Kind of refresher material. I used to hate Anki, but now it's like Godson, yeah, I mean honestly, you know. I keep trying to force it and I think it's just because of trying to be part of a. Community that loves Anki so much and I fully get it, but it's just, I don't know, like. I could do the same thing on Anki and I feel like I wouldn't get as much out of it, which I know is an excuse, but. I don't know. I don't know, I think Anki does a lot of really, really good things, it's just really, really, really struggling, like I really struggle with it. Except for like the, um, like when I got the, uh, Tongo decks from Matt. Those were really, really good and stuff like that, but yeah, it's. Whatever, I started the 6K deck on Anki, but I found the deck was making me learn uncommon words. Interesting, I see, but hope you're doing well, I don't love Anki, but it is a necessary evil. Yeah, like I said, I'll use it for sentence cards when I go through my phases of that, but, um. Yeah, I don't know, one thing I've been doing lately is literally just watching stuff and just. Like, I'll use Learn Languages with Netflix and just pop something up if I don't know the word and. Just, I mean, just soak it in, and it was, and it works, and I think that's the thing, like in the beginning, like I took a lot, I took a lot of criticism to heart. But now that I see how I'm learning and that I am learning, I'm pretty comfortable with what I'm doing. I'm not meaning that negatively towards you, I'm just saying like, um, like I, people will be like, you have to use Anki, you have to do this, you have to do that, and I would try to force it. And honestly, I think trying to do that slowed a little bit of my progress down, and now I'm kinda just doing what I'm enjoying, I'm making progress. Is it as fast as anybody else? Probably not, but. It's, it's at the pace that I'm comfortable with and so, I'm gonna keep on going, I'll go through phases with Anki, I'll probably go through another one. Who knows, relatively soon, but yeah, that's probably the best, I don't think you need Anki, I haven't added new cards in three months, just read and look up. Yeah, and I know several people, I know several people, I know more people personally. That have, um, learned without an Anki or without a flashcard system than I do. That have learned with, hopefully that wording made sense. Terrible, terrible pronunciation. There's also another word for building, what is it? Uh, okay, um. My crap, I can't remember it, I would note if I heard it, which is the power of immersion, but, uh. Yeah, there's another word for building, I mean, it's not that big of a deal, but there's another word for building, um. Is there a Japan Cultural Center in your town? Not in the slightest. Yeah, not in the, not in the slightest, there's not anything, anything near me. If you don't like Anki, that's fine, but why would you use something just like Anki but way worse? Well, I think that's completely objective based on who's using it. So I don't find this to be worse, which is why I'm using it. Yep, good call. I know it's basically Nihongo Shark Deck, for sure, how is it better? Because I like to do it, dude, what does it matter? Like, that's cool, like I'm not arguing for it, I personally like this better, it's literally a personal preference. You either love Anki or you hate it. Is this Duolingo? No, this is ino.jp. Alright, like I'm not, I'm not trying to like argue about it, but it's just, I prefer this to Anki. I don't, I don't, if I had an explanation for you, I would totally give it to you, but I don't, like it's just. To me, this is more visually appealing and I have an easier time sticking with it and doing it. So, I don't know, that's just how I feel. Alright. That's what I think too. Good stuff works the same way. Oh crap, I literally forgot what I was looking for. Is it SRF space? It is. Gogo is, oh crap. Nah, I knew, okay, yeah. That goes on, okay. We'll review it. Gogo. Yeah, yeah. There's not much rain this year. Keep on truckin', yeah, like I said, I enjoy it, I'm not trying, like I said, in no way, shape or form am I trying to like argue with anybody or anything like that, I just. I happen to prefer. This system, that's not a knock on anybody who likes Anki, and if you like Anki, I highly encourage you to use that. There's no, I'm not gonna try to sway you one way or another, this is just what I happen to enjoy. What? I don't know, that's what this says. Okay. Cool, so we still got some order review. I'm gonna do one more review of that and then we'll try to figure something else out. These reviews true to the next level procrastination, yeah. I don't know, I just, I just don't, I don't know, it's just a personal preference, a lot of times, it's just like the. I actually used ino before I used Anki for the first time, or like, actually tried to use Anki like. More than just a little bit here or there, so, um, I don't know, I, I just something, something I prefer, it's kinda like the idea of, uh. Of, um. What am I trying to say here? It's kinda like the idea of getting used to an iPhone or an Android first. Um, I know this will get me hate from both sides, but you're not wrong whether or not you. Have an Android or an iPhone, it's just a lot of times, a lot of times, not all the time, but a lot of times, it's just what you get used to. Did you watch the Justice League Snyder Cut? I did not. I haven't seen Justice League, the non Snyder Cut. Kuretsu to be given. Japanese, your first language you're learning? To the extent that I am, yes, I would say. Just read more, tis what I'm doing right now, reading the characters. Do you have any recommendations of stuff to read? I'll gladly take it though, cuz I, uh. Definitely, definitely could use some recommendation, uh. For that. Just face with Tao. Kotoshi wa Itariya ni loku shita. Uh, that book was very interesting, or this book was very interesting. Do you know what this says? Yes, that is. Word or language is gonna be. And there's an argument against this, is that sometimes hearing a word just in isolation like that, kind of the idea of, uh. I don't know, just not very good necessarily, like it's, um. Probably could benefit from, you know, hearing it, so that, that's definitely an argument for or against this versus. Anki, cuz in Anki you just build the cards the way that you want them to be. Isn't this vocabulary too easy? Yeah, 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 I'm just kind of, uh, just honestly trying to get back into the, to the swing of using this, um, I actually accidentally. Deleted my, I was like six or 700 cards in and I, uh, cleared them all. And so I'm just kinda getting back into it, uh. Honestly, I could probably skip forward through, um. A couple, like, to a certain deck, but, uh, I'm just gonna do, trying to do like 25-ish cards a day, just cuz then I can. I'll get there within a couple of days anyway, and who knows, I probably need some refresher on some of this stuff. Boom, cool. Also got 30 ready to review and I've added four new words, but, uh, the argument against it is that you say you don't have a lot of time and this seems very slow. It's literally the same speed as Anki, plus this, this content is free on Anki, cool. Also multiple choices and the format seems pretty bad, my opinion, nah, and that's absolutely valid, that is. That's exactly what it is, it's, it is your opinion and I would not encourage you to use this program in the slightest. If you have no interest in it, and I, I fully understand what you're saying, trust me, I've literally had this conversation. Hundreds of times, like people hate me because I'm not a gigantic Anki fanatic and that's. It is what it is, I don't dislike Anki, I just, to me, this works better. Again, it's just personal preference, it's not a. It's not necessarily, yeah, see, like I erased all my cards and I'm not exactly sure how that happened, but, uh. But yeah, see, cuz I've, I've used this for 26 hours, the biggest problem with this versus Anki is Anki is directly tied to your immersion, so what you decide to learn can make it more efficient. But this forces you to learn whatever vocabulary tells you, absolutely, it's absolutely correct. Like you said, people get fluent without Anki, yeah, people have gotten fluent for Anki, uh, basically since the beginning of time until Anki was invented. For sure, like I said, I, like, I don't think I'm crapping on Anki, I think Anki's a perfectly fine program, I just. And for what the purpose of Anki is, yeah, sure, I would, you know, use it, but. Many people use Anki with pre-made decks though, they do, they absolutely do. They do, for sure. Like I said, I, if I could explain it to you guys, I would, I just don't know, just in my head. I just have a more, I have more enjoyment using this. Versus, versus Anki, so I need to do a little bit, uh. You know, I need to do more sentence mining and stuff, but I'm just trying to get some just bonus vocabulary, uh, kinda whatever about. I think Matt's saying Anki is basically the only way to learn Japanese or any language gets to people's head. I don't think, I don't know if he said that, maybe, uh, I think he enjoys Anki, but I don't think he's ever said that. My biggest regret was going hard with Anki early on, I should have immersed more and used Anki less. Now I know obscure terms like your test and I'm missing a lot of everyday objects, yeah. Yeah, for sure. Good old Anki, I, I enjoyed Anki, I'm not saying I don't, it's just, you know, I also enjoy this program. Which is why I use it. I'm starting to recognize the Kanji in written Japanese, even though I only know a few of them. Yeah, that's cool, that's super awesome. Why does everyone in the Japanese learning community talk about this map vs Japan guy? Uh, I would say, cuz he, like when you search learn Japanese, he's one of the first people to pop up. So a lot of people will listen to what he says. Alright, let's do. Alright, let's do, uh, what could we do here? Broadened it out, basically, I only listened to Jemath from DJ Team. Where is this? Here we go, he carried Cat's Legacy, yeah. Okay, let's do some. I mean, I can go back to Netflix and we could, I can mute the audio and. Wow, crap, I can't do that on here though, cuz I don't have a way to, to block the screen. Cuz I'm using StreamYard and not, um. Yeah, I don't think that's gonna work. Maybe, let's see. Do this, what if I do that? No, I don't think that's gonna work. Yeah, you can't like do any like overlays or anything, so let's not do that, okay. We'll figure something out here, are you preparing for a level of the JLPT? I am not. I am not, I would, uh, maybe, maybe at some point down the road, but it's not really anything, uh, that I have an interest in right now, um. Just because I'm not gonna be like moving to Japan or anything like that anytime soon, so, um, yeah, it's not really. Not really prepping for anything in particular. Get out of that, let's do. Uh, I'm really feeling it doing that, though. I don't know. Maybe we'll just chat for a little bit. Everybody seems to hate the study method, so Maybe I'll just stop doing Japanese altogether, because I get really tired of the Stuff. Did you ever watch Tokyo, uh, Tokyo Sims? N- I've, I have seen a couple, but not, um, I gotta watch them regularly. Just because I don't rea- I don't watch a lot of stuff regularly, um, anymore. Because I just spend so much time with, uh... Doing some other stuff. Um, yeah, I haven't watched. Haven't watched. I did see where he, because it kept popping up in my recommended feed, where he did a video recently of, uh... Him speaking Japanese. Let's see. Let me see if I can find that real quick. Sam, here we go. Boom. Mute that just to make sure I'm not gonna Get hit videos. Um, yeah, three days ago, he did, he did the White guy speaks fluent Japanese to Japanese people in outskirts of Tokyo. I'll probably watch that, honestly. For sure. Just to give it, to give it a shot. Uh, no barrels held. What? Uh, how often do you study? I haven't touched a grammar book since last year. Um... Well, depends on what you mean. I look at any time I spend with the language to be study, which I know again is kind of Controversial within the realm of Japanese learners, but, uh... Like whether I'm immersing or anything, I just consider that active Study, like reaching towards a goal, so, um... Um, here recently, not as much as in the beginning, just because I've got some other ventures that I've got working for myself, like In my personal life. I've got some other stuff that's going on, but, um... I mean, at least an hour a day, if not a little bit more, between just like listening and I'll, I'll try to watch a TV show Or some YouTube videos in, in Japanese and then I'll try to do some, um... Maybe just a little bit of vocabulary building or something like that. So, uh, in terms of just Time spent with the language, um, definitely At least an hour, if not more, a day. Screw it. I'm gonna keep doing iKnow.jp, because it's what I enjoy doing. Ba-ba-ba. There's a lot of studying. That's a lot of studying. Pretty impressive. I get burnout pretty easily. Burnout's definitely real. I, uh... Have went through my fair share of burnout, of burnout, that's for sure. Share screen. We're gonna go back here. We're gonna go back to here. Here, here. I solved this. I got way too many tabs open here. Here. Can I read that? Move, uh, no, let's see. Lunge. Learned that word from Pokemon. That's something I would like to do. I wonder if, let me see, I'm gonna check and see. Does Netflix have Like Pokemon? I tried memorize. I do, I have tried memorize. Um... I, I, I think it's okay. My biggest issue with memorize is that I can't create, uh... Flashcards from the app. Um, which I know the argument is, well, you can't with iKnow, but iKnow is Like a robust vocabulary system as to where memorize is designed to create flashcards. And you can't. You can't create flashcards on the application. I don't like that. And there's a bunch of Pokemon stuff on Netflix. Wonder if any, well, if I was in, if I put my, um... If I put my, uh, VPN in Japan, I could do that, too. I might do that, man. I might just start checking out some Some Pokemon. What's the end order? We're gonna go ahead and remove that message. Can I read? In you? This is why I freaking hate doing this stuff sometimes, man. Why would you, why would you make flashcards? Why would you make flashcards on an app? I'm saying, like, the... I don't know, because people make flashcards on apps. There's tons of people who make flashcards on apps all the time, whether it be Anki or anything like that. Uh, you can Google images at his own risk. But yeah, I mean, it's just the idea of if you see something out and you want to make a flashcard of it, you should be able to. I would recommend using your computer. It's faster. Oh, no, for sure. Yeah, like if you were trying to do like mass cards and stuff, absolutely, but like just the idea that if you wanted to make one while you were out, You can't, uh, you know what I mean? Like it's, it's, uh... Just the fact that it's not an option is kind of weird. Here, I'll freaking load up here. Let me, let's see where my Anki is. Let's, uh... Uh, do what makes you happy. Don't let us, nobody, nobody here is a nobody. That's not a, that's not something I... I think immersion-based learning with any vocab trainer works. Yeah, well, I mean, there's People have done that for a long, long time. Let me see. What's going on with my Anki? Yeah. A bunch of JLPT decks. Which I don't use anymore. JLPT, Japanese Sentence Deck. Do have some sentences here. Interesting. You know what? Uh, for, I'll, I'll, I'll try to get my Anki, like, set up and I'll do a stream doing Anki. When do you think you'll go to Japan? Whenever it opens, man. That's, it's like First, first trip that I have interest in going is to Japan. Just gotta, just gotta wait on it to, uh... Just gotta wait on it to open. You should learn Korean. I would like to learn Korean at some point. Did you mine much? Uh, I have like twenty cards on Anki. But a lot of times, like I said, when I'm watching Netflix, I kind of just Watch Netflix and I'll just look upwards as they As they come up, like nothing Nothing too, too serious, like For that. Like I said, I just, I try to, I try to Learn the way that I learn. Like, I just try to have fun with what I'm doing. I wish that this, I wish that the streamer, I should have used OBS, because I could just go into Like sentence mining right now, but like I can't with OBS, I can't, uh... I mean, with OBS, Jesus. With the StreamYard, uh... Site, I can't like Block the screen, I guess? Like to where you guys couldn't, like to, basically to where I would not have A copyright strike. Actually, I wonder. No, that still wouldn't work. I don't know. We'll figure it out at some point, maybe. Because I would like to do that, because it's ten forty-five. I could definitely Definitely mine. If I open Anki, here's a question. Can I do this? If I open Anki? Do you know Nuke Marine? I do know Nuke Marine. I did an interview with Nuke Marine on my channel For last year, sometime a long time ago. Alright, let's do, let's remove that. Let me see. Share. Share screen. Application window. Now, my question is, does this, so there's that. See, you can see Uh, yeah, you can see that. There's the Tango Deck. There is Japanese Sentence Deck. Random vocabulary has one card in it. Wonder what this is? Shiboru, Taring. Yeah, okay. Actually, remember, I remember, uh... I remember using that. Okay, uh, let's just Let's just go back out of here. And then Add. So let me see what happened. I want to see what happens. Let me move this over here. I know this is moving on your screen. You're probably looking all weird. Does it pop up both windows? No, it doesn't. Okay. So can I only add one screen? I can't. So that, that would literally be all that you can see, is just that. I was gonna see if I could mine and like Have it to where you could see. But, um... Share, uh, screen. Yeah, that's all, all it is. Lame. Off to do it on OBS. Uh, close. Okay. That wouldn't, uh, wouldn't help you from it. Um, let's see. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Do you know Nuke Marine? Uh, do you think you'll ever live in Japan for a month or so? Uh, definitely a possibility. Um... Um, like I definitely wouldn't be opposed to. It would obviously depend on, um... Um... What I could do in terms of Yeah, obviously, you know, my, my wife and my kids and stuff, but You should interview Nuke Marine again. Yeah, I would like to. I might try to send him a message. I'd like to, I wanna, I would like to start doing some interviews and stuff again, but Um, you should interview Anime Godfather, AKA The Mad AJter. I did an interview with him, too. Um, wish Nuke Chan would start streaming again. Did he make yet? I'm suffering from severe burnout. If you're on the young side, do not take your unlimited energy for granted. Three hours emergent and I'm in cat- catatonic state. Can you show your Anki stats? Um, I don't real, like I can, yeah, hang on. Let me see if I can figure out how to make this work. Um, I don't know enough vocab to even mine. You'd know a lot more than you You would, like, you'd be surprised at how much you know versus what you think you do. Uh, you know on the Refold server, they have dedicated recommended, recommendation channels. You should check it out. Uh, I need to see. I don't even know if I'm in the Refold server. I can, I'll check. I should be, like, I'm a Patreon for Matt, but I'll, I'll have to check. I should be. I, I don't, like, I, I I try to pop into my Discord, because it's my Discord, but I don't spend a whole lot of time there. Uh, what, what was I doing? Oh, somebody asked about Anki stats. Um, stop share. Okay, not what I wanted. Share. Share screen. Application window. Okay, now I gotta wait until Um... Is that working? Whoa, okay. Yeah, so, uh, it's been a long time since I've used Anki. This is also for everything. Collections. Uh, yeah. One year. That's not right at all. I know I've used it more than that over the last year, because I've used it Let's enter. Oh, that's, okay, okay. I read that wrong, so Um, let me pop this back up in case anybody has any Questions or anything. Um, move that. Known a fuck have, you know, uh, tell us a fun fact about you? Hmm... Let me think on that. I really don't know. Hello, Wanya. Welcome, welcome. Uh, so yeah, so I don't know what you're looking for, but here are the stats. As you can see, I don't freaking use Anki that much. Like when I first started, I did, but, uh... Yeah, not, not so much anymore. Also, this number right here, the, for the, for the learning cards is a lot lower, because I almost always will fail a card The first time I see it. Um... Just to see it again. But again, that's, need to hear another, because I don't really Don't really use it a lot, so How's the DDP yoga going? Uh, it's, so it's actually going for me well. Um... I have a really bad flexibility problem. Um, and so, uh... It's helped that tremendously, which I mean, it's, it's yoga, so I know that probably sounds like, well, yeah, duh, common sense. But yeah, I actually, um, it's, to me, it has helped Uh, it has helped a lot. Um... And I really, really enjoy it. I try to do it two to three, maybe four days a week sometimes. Or not two to three, usually three, I should say, uh, three to four days a week. Um, and yeah, it's, it's actually working pretty well. How many languages have you ever studied? Uh, probably all of them. I enjoy, I enjoy looking into languages, how they work, that whole That whole thing. I just, I really do, so... But I mean, if you're, if you're talking about languages, how many languages have I, have I studied, like in terms of Like legitimate studied, I would say I guess two, Spanish and Japanese. I can't think of anything else that I've studied, like extensively. Like I've done videos Where I learned French for a little bit and Russian and whatnot, but you can, like, they never last very, very long. Spanish and Japanese are the only ones that I've really studied, I can think of. Is there anything else? I can't think of anything else right off. I think those are, uh... Yeah. I have seventy percent true retention, because I mine everything. Nice. Yeah, that's, 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 uh... Need to, to do that. I don't know. Next time, so I'll, I'll stream it. I'm gonna start streaming again. I know that I've streamed regular, but I'm gonna start streaming again. What I'll do next time? Um... What I, what I'll do next time is I will run this in OBS. I have, oh, true retention. Seventy is bad. I thought, I was, for some reason, I was, I, uh... Yeah, you're supposed to hit Uh, above that. I mean, I don't know, man. As long as you're having fun, that's the thing, like, that's the other thing, too. I know people get really wrapped up in numbers and stuff, but Yeah, I think, you know... Um, as long as you're having fun, dude, like I think a lot of people, I'm not saying you or anyone in general, but I think a lot of people, uh... Kind of put the, this idea of It being a contest, they have to be better than the next person in terms of doing it faster, their numbers and stats have to be better, but If you're having fun and you're, and you're learning I mean, that's, to me, that's, that's what it's, that's what it's all about. Um... But yeah, so, um, I'm gonna start, trying to start stream a couple times a week. Um, just trying to figure out some schedules and stuff, and I do have some stuff Going on, but, um, I think next time, like, I don't, I don't, it won't be tomorrow, because tomorrow I have, uh... Well, I have a lesson, but it's not for Japanese, but it's for a Like a project that I have coming up with, doing some stuff, but anyway, um... I think, uh, ma- maybe Thursday or Friday, but regardless, I'm gonna do, I'll do a stream, but I use OBS. And then I'll pop up, just like in the last, like the, uh, Immersed With Me stream. I'll pop it up through, you can see Netflix. And, um, and then try to get my, I need to work on my OBS to see if I can get it to where it'll Get the whole screen. That way you can see, like, we can just do like a whole, like, sentence mining Uh, sentence mining episode type of thing. I've mined seventy thousand cards, but only reviewed around fourteen thousand. That's impressive. Very, very impressive to me. Uh, Rock, Rocketenko, Rocket, Rocketenko 2. Do you do, um, like DDP yoga or anything? Just out of curiosity. Oh my god, dude, I have to stop. Can't stop the on him. Maybe we can do, maybe we can have like a show that's like The stream show. We can like stream it and I'll sentence mine it and stuff. Granted, you See, the, the thing that sucks about that is though, it, like, there's nothing that you can see, because I can't show anything Because it will be copyrighted material, so that makes it kind of hard. But, I don't know. It could, it could still be fun. Hmm, let's see. Pokemon the Movie. Pokemon Sun and Moon Ultra Legends, I wonder, see, that's, I wonder if these have subtitles. Let's start this one just out of curiosity. And, pause before I get copyright strength. Maybe? All right, it's just straight up not loading. Um, boom, let's see, Netflix Audio. Okay, they don't have Japanese audio for the show, so, that's probably not gonna be. And they have captions for essentially every language on the planet except for Japanese, so, that Pokemon show is not gonna work, we can find something though. Pokemon Journeys is good, it's a reboot of sorts, is that on Netflix? Let me see. Go look here. Pokemon. I know that's what Kinnick Ninja loves. Pokemon Journey? Pokemon Journey, there we go, new episodes, all right, Journeys, gotcha. See if there's, uh, Japanese subtitles for this. Whoa, let's say, let's stop with the sound there. Subtitles, not in Japanese, audio also not in Japanese, I bet if I put my, um, VPN into Japan, uh, maybe we could find something, but. Holy crap. Also, I'm gonna try to do, uh, maybe, uh, an interview or two, but, and I am gonna make a video about, uh, yeah, you gotta get your, gotta use your Japanese VPN, cool, I am gonna make a video about what I'm doing. Um, because with me going to Iceland, I am gonna study a little bit of Icelandic, um, not to, not to try to get like to, uh, um, not to try to get to like a fluent, like, I'm not gonna study it like I study Japanese, but I'm gonna try to study some greetings and stuff like that to use, so. Uh, you should get into downloading your content, Netflix doesn't have much content, MPV is the way to go. Yeah, I've seen a lot of people, that seems to be a pretty big thing, or like, getting to be a big thing, may- maybe it's been a big thing and I'm just now seeing it. But I've seen a lot of people who are more so into downloading their content versus watching it on Netflix. That's a, that's a very interesting, I'm gonna have to check that out, that makes sense, though, because then you can literally find anything. I didn't take Matt's advice on considering subbed content as reading, now my listening ability has fallen way behind. Gotcha. Yeah, I tried to, um, I, which, I listen to Japanese, uh, kind of off and on, but for the most part throughout the day. Um, like, there's some Japanese YouTubers that I like, and so, I'll just play their videos just to have the audio, just so, you know, whenever I get to take even just a slight second break, I boom, got that, um, got that Japanese going in my ear, so that's definitely, I think, helped me i- in regards to that, so, but I need to get, one thing I need to get better on is immersing, so I, I need to get better on immersing with subtitles and, and being, you know, proficient at it. But I also need to get into the mindset of watching without subtitles, even just occasionally, just to see what I can understand, see what I'm taking in, um, and then stuff like that. I recommend, download anything. So everything that's well seeded, you could try, and you had two? Cool, yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to check that out, because like I said, uh, which I do like, uh, oh, what my problem is, I do like, um, uh, Learn Languages, Netflix, I really, really like that, um, and I, I do use that. But, uh, you know, I'm also, if the content's not there, the content's not there, reading a novel and mining it, then listening to the audiobook is the ideal setup, yeah, um. I think the problem is, is like, my Japanese isn't so, it's weird, man, because I, I say that my Japanese isn't terrible, and I, I know to a lot of people that sounds like I'm saying that I'm good in Japanese and I'm not, but what I'm saying is, compared to where I was a year ago, my Japanese is not terrible. But I've tried to do that before, but again, from where the parsing on Japanese can be weird with, like, i- depending on what program you're using, it can be a little bit weird, so, I still get confused about things sometimes, um. For example, if you watch a show and then import it into Link, I still get really confused, and I know that that appears to work for a lot of people, I know Eric from Link does it all the time and whatnot, but, um, I really, like, I don't know, it, it's hard to explain, uh, there's wa- there's ways to do the exact same thing as learn languages with Netflix, with MPV. You can mine cards pretty fast with anime cards, MPV script or Nagaku, interesting, I'll have to check that out. Because that sounds, uh, awesome, honestly, so. I think, so, just talking about sentence mining, the big thing that I struggle with is I will make a card and think that I understand it, and then I'll go to look at it the next day, and I won't, um, like, there's like some sort of little grammar thing that I don't really pick up, or there's some other little aspect of it that I didn't quite understand that I thought I did. Tolerate ambiguity, like Matt says, it's still pretty uncomfortable for me to read novels too, but you're just looking for I plus one sentences? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I need, I mean, like I said, I definitely need to get, get better at that, maybe I can do, honestly, I mean, realistically, I wouldn't mind if I could get the setup to where I could show my Anki. And then have my Netflix to where the screen's blacked out, except for the subtitle part, so you guys could see it. I think that could work, I finished like three manga before starting novels. I still have manga. Uh, who is, like, it's eleven o'clock, man, I can't, I can't even, um. I still have a bunch of cards, I mean, anime, manga, lord, I still have a bunch of manga that I got, that I still just can't really get into, I finished, uh, see, I just deleted, I just deleted the cards I didn't understand, but mine, um, by mistake, yeah, yeah, for sure. Uh, no one talks about it these days, but you can keep your reading and anime immersion separate. Read when you're refreshed and just let anime wash over you and enjoy it when you're tired. If you're not reading Vinnies, you're not gonna make it simple. Um, and like I said, I mean, with reading, uh, I know, I mean, some of you may be new, some of you maybe have been here for the past year, since I started doing Japanese like this, but, um, I don't know, reading, I don't mind reading subtitles, like, that's, I, you know, that's, that's fine, but like, uh, doing manga or anime or, um, anything like that is, is, it could be, it could be brutal for me. Play or influence you like a DJT champ? They have, there, there is that one game, have you seen the, that Kohei game that never seems like it's gonna release? Kohei game, it's been in beta for like three years. Please consider reading our statement on how COVID has impacted the development of Kohei. I can't imagine, and I don't mean this offensively, but I can't imagine it would have impacted it a lot, because no one is, like, it's been literally finished forever, like, it's been in beta, you can buy the game, and you have been able to buy the game for such a long time. VN is way better than manga, oh, yeah, yeah, I, so I can get on, I can get on Steam and find some stuff like that. Let me see here, I don't mean that negatively towards Kohei, they, it seems really cool, but like, how it works. Yeah, available, coming soon, it's literally been coming soon forever. Um, yeah, Rocket, you're right. I don't even like virtual, uh, visual novels, but I play them because the audio with text is incredible. Instead of doing my daily manga reading, I'm going to tell you to read. If you have any recommendations, let me know, because, uh, it's something I would like to get into, I just, uh, haven't. Because I don't really know where to start. Oh, lord. Do you care if it's eroge or not? I don't even know what that means, what does that mean? What is, am I gonna regret Googling eroge? Pronounced, oh. I don't care, if it teaches me Japanese, I don't care. Like, yeah, so, no, that's, that's cool, how have I not heard that term, though, you would think that. Okay, a portmanteau erotic game. Erochikemo, it's Japanese, John, nice. Do you care, arrows from erotic gaze from game, gotcha. Sex scenes, yeah, no, I don't care, like I said, I, uh, if it teaches me Japanese, I mean, it teaches me Japanese, um, I'm willing to try uh, anything at this point, I think maybe, um, like I said, it for sure won't be tomorrow. Um, unless I'm just really feeling good after this lesson I have with what I'm working on, but, um, I think for the next stream, maybe Thursday or Friday, I think I'm just gonna delete, like, I'm just gonna literally reset my Anki to where there's nothing in there, we're gonna create a deck, and, um, we're just gonna sentence, we're gonna sentence mine some stuff. This is my goal, I hear Nikopara is easy. I don't even know, that's the one thing, I need to, I guess I need to create a new Steam account, because I don't even know what my thing, Steam account name is. Let's see, what's it called? Nikopara. Nikopara, here we go. And these have, like, subtitles and stuff, right? Timo. English, Japanese subtitles, yep, there it is. Interesting, so you could mine the game if you wanted to. Nikopara Chad's Rise Up, I have no clue, I don't know, I mean, I, I can, like I said, I can give it a shot at this point, it's not that I don't care, uh, but I, I really, just to get some more content. Can you get it, can you get in, in Japanese on Steam, um? I've never, never tried, I, I, I don't remember my Steam login for one, I need to create another account, I literally don't remember what my Steam login is, I'm sure there's a Japanese Steam. But I, I mean, I could be wrong, but it should be. A lot of virtual novels you can't. Uh, interesting. The comments on this are hilarious. Oh. I wonder, I wonder how that would affect my cha- well, I couldn't play anything like that, because I couldn't show that on the channel, but you should just download them for maybe your Nia on some, or some site. The site lists Vins by difficulty. That would be super beneficial, I do believe. All right. It's, it's ten after, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go for about ten more minutes, maybe, maybe, and then I'm gonna head to bed, I'm gonna, um, just figure out kind of what I'm doing, and then, like I said, within the next couple of days, I'm gonna do another livestream of just kind of a study, and, uh, I'm gonna reset my Anki back to zero, uh, just delete all the decks in it, create a new deck, and we will work on, we will, we will do some sentence mining, we'll do some live, live sentence mining. Light novels and anime. Cool, yeah, I'll, I'll check some of those out, like I said, I'm gonna have to create a new, uh, new account, but, or I'll, maybe I can do like a recover password type of thing, mm-mm. Bum bum bum. Bum bum bum. Cool, cool. Cool. Uh, all right, uh, does anybody have any, any kind of, like, further questions or anything? I wish I knew when to tell you, um, all I can say, like, if you wanna hit the notification bell there, so that way you're notified, but next time, next time I go live, well, should be next time I go live, we'll do, we'll do like a live, um, sentence mine, episode, probably gonna, I'll do a test stream of it, just like during the day or something, like a private stream, just to see if I can get it to where it'll show all the sections of the, like, the dictionary and adding it and all that stuff, and, um, to see if it shows all the screens, but if not, we'll, we'll figure something out, but yeah, that's what we'll do, well, we shall sentence mine. You should make a contest to learn Japanese with your community and give out a grand prize. Hmm, well, I mean, it's not a bad idea, I don't like the idea of making language learning a contest, just because, uh, for my own personal issues with that, because, like, that's where I've gotten in trouble in the past, is where I try to accomplish things that I just can't, um, just because of time or whatever, but, I mean, I'm also not opposed to hearing whatever ideas, whatever ideas you have. Um, you should make a contest, do you read these questions before you say them out loud? Um, I mean, sometimes, I, I don't know, honestly, I don't know, um, maybe. I think it's one of those things where I can start reading and my eyes will skim ahead, but my brain is still reading parts before. And so if it's anything crazy, I generally just try to stop. All right. You should stream daily. Uh, I well, that's not a bad idea. I would like to. I really enjoy streaming. Like, it's honestly really, really fun because I love uh, I really like honestly talking with people um just the way that I am right now, but I just have some other other stuff that um I've got other stuff that I prioritize over that, some stuff that I'm that I'm that I'm doing that I really enjoy doing. Um. So yeah, it's not something that's something I can do. I know. I think I spoiled people like last year when I first started because I was streaming like five and six days a week when I was doing like the interviews and stuff, but um, I just have between my day job and then my wife and my kid and then working on some stuff uh with some other people and several different things. Uh, it's just not really, not really feasible. And then, of course, taking time to try and plan out um, some of these trips I'm taking and just trying to spend, honestly, I spend a little bit of time um. Uh, just working towards a future for, you know, me and what I want the channel to do. So some Japanese wrestling, not really a fan, but those tight little outfits were nice. Basically, we have something in common. See, that is all. Uh, I think we like Japanese wrestling for two different reasons, but yeah, Japanese wrestling's rules, Japanese wrestling rule, pro wrestling in general rules. I love wrestling. I love it. I will watch it. Uh, I mean, as long as it's being done properly or what I consider properly, I should say, uh. Because again, that is in the eye of the beholder, what one considers proper wrestling, another would not, but yeah, I I love I love some wrestling. That's one thing I miss about, like, I'm anxious for everything to kind of get squared away, man. I miss going to wrestling shows. Like, because nobody's really around. There is the this company right here, ICW. They're generally based in New Jersey, but they're running um, a lot in Florida right now, but uh, Florida is a far trip for me. They run in Tampa. I'm in Virginia. You should interview Kevin Nash and Goldberg. I have, I I met Bill Goldberg. Hold on, I'll pull up the picture. Um. I might have it on my phone. Actually, it might be easier. Not sure how I could turn that into a language discussion, but yeah. Albums. Meeting people. How about where is? I've actually met a lot of random people. Um. I'm gonna show you guys some other wrestlers. Here is Abdul the Butcher. Boom. That was like circa 20, gosh, 2011, maybe. Met Haxall Jim Duggan at a Sheetz. Um, there's me and one of my best friends, Andrew, meeting Diamond Dallas Page. Hey, let's see. There's Ron Simmons, AKA Farouk, whichever one you know him as. Where is the picture of Bill Goldberg? There he is. There uh. Not to be shocking, but there's me and again, my friend Andrew and Bill Goldberg. It's me with long hair. I also met the kid that played Kino in Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles 2 randomly. And here is me and Ted DiBiase. Boom. And that's about it. I mean, I've got some other ones here, but I don't know if it's people that you would necessarily know unless like here's me and Schlock, who's like my favorite wrestler on the planet. I freaking love Schlock. Me with my long flowing hair. Yeah, anyway, so there you go. Was that yoga? That was DDP. Yeah. That was DDP. Honestly, seeing that hairstyle of me with Schler, I kind of think I might bring that back. I might do that. I like long hair. What do you guys think? Should I bring that hairstyle back? Should I grow my hair back out? It's so easy to have not long hair, though, like like it takes so long to get to get ready. Like, it's so, it's me and Matt Hardy. Like, I prefer longer hair on myself. I just hate the, just hate the process of having to grow it out. I look better with short hair. I think, I think the, I think the, I think the reason that longer hair looked a little bit weird at the time is just because well, my hair is really thick, but on top of my larger stature, I think it just looks kind of weird sometimes. I don't know. I do like long hair, but you should go bald. I am bald. I don't have hair. Unless you're talking about like like bald bald, like not even stubble. Goldberg bald? Yeah, no, I don't think I could do that. I think it would look especially, well, see, my head, it already looks weird because so I mean, I'm not denying that my face is fat, like I get it, like I'm I'm a bigger guy. We we get that, but like part of what makes my face look fatter is this. I need to get rid of like this. That way it comes down a little bit more flat and it makes it look not quite as bad. What about? What's up, man? Welcome. Tell language come up to cut off his locks and donate them to you. No, I wouldn't. I wouldn't do that. Honestly, the last time, like right before I cut my hair this last time, I was like, man, I think I'm gonna grow it out again. Um, and then once I got to a certain level, I just kind of was like, eh, I really like showering and not having it take like 35 minutes. Like, it would take me so long to shower because my hair is, I mean, you can see from the pictures, and if you've watched for a while, I mean, I've had long hair while doing this channel, and it's just like, it's so thick, man. My hair is so thick. So it takes forever to like wash and stuff. And I know that I know that females will do this from time to time, and I'm sure dudes with long hair do, but I'm not the type of guy, like, I can't not wash my hair every day, so it's not like I could wash my hair one day and not do it the next. Like, I I mean, I would, I would have to wash it every day, and it was just such a miserable experience. Like, it's fine the first little bit, and then you're just kind of just like, meh, I kind of wish this would end. I just hate how long it takes. It would, but my hair does grow fast. Like, if I didn't cut it for probably close to a year, it would probably be about that long again. Like, it grows really, really fast. I didn't know this was a beauty channel. Um, but yeah. I do prefer, overall, I do prefer longer hair on myself versus short. Right, all right. Any final questions? If not, I am gonna wrap up here so I can go um, sleep. What does your? Well, my wife doesn't prefer either. She's, she always gets um annoyed with me because I don't have a hairstyle in terms of like, obviously, like a haircut. I basically grow my hair until I get tired of it, and then instead of getting it cut and trying to have a haircut or anything like that, I shave it. Yeah. I just shave her, shave her right off, and I I just, and she's always like, you need to just try to get a hairstyle or like just get a normal haircut. I'm like, I can't, because I can't justify paying. I mean, I don't know how much it costs. Uh, I know that I've talked to people who have went and got haircuts, and I mean, it can be more money than I want to spend, and I mean, you're talking like eight or $10, but I can't justify paying somebody to cut my hair when I can just shave it. So, yeah, she she's not a fan of either. Uh, when are we gonna get the new link? I'm not sure. Uh, I actually dropped my link subscription like a month ago because um of just, I hadn't used it a lot lately. Um, I don't mind supporting companies, but I literally the amount that I've used it in the past year versus the amount of money that I've paid into it, I don't uh, it's what really doing it. I think, I think with Japanese is I get a little bit further into like being better at Japanese, I guess, is the way that we can word it. Um. I'll probably get out or I know I will get link back. Um, and that way I don't have to worry about their system because their system, and it's not their fault, it's literally just Japanese, but the way that the language is parsed and stuff like that, like it's like honestly, I would spend more time trying to figure out if it was parsed correctly and like split where it needed to be split versus actually just quote unquote studying. So um, so I'm not, I'm not sure, but I know that it's not out yet. So I'm not sure when that's coming out. Let me go. I'm gonna go to their Twitter and see if there's any link. Let's see here. Link podcast, link podcast. Once it go. Blah, blah, maintaining more Steve videos. I had no success on Link Central with it, but after two weeks, I can already hear words, people. All sixty seven, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I mean, there doesn't appear to be uh, any kind of update that I can see on there. There's stuff. I don't know. Do you invest in crypto? I do not. Buy some Bitcoin, just a random thought, maybe it can help you fund your travels. Yeah, well, I actually, I'm doing some aside. Um. Well, it's something I take very seriously and uh I'm getting to do a ton, but um, I have a, I say side gig because I still have my, like, my main job, um, but I have a side job that I am investing uh the money that I make from that into my travels, so um. And the cool thing is whom I'm working with and what I'm doing is something I can do while traveling, so uh, yeah. I'm just hoping honestly, my like, I think one of my big fears is like like going to Iceland for like a week and filming all this awesome stuff, and then from where my channel grew on like my learning of Japanese, just no one watching like my travel videos and stuff. Like, that's, that's definitely kind of scary. Not that like, I'm not traveling because I want to become a travel channel or anything. I just think that um you know, I want to share my my journeys and stuff and uh it's gonna suck if people are like, we have no interest or care about this, and I'm like, crap, man, but this is so fun. Why, like, I love watching, but personally, I love watching people travel. But yeah, I'm I'm, I'm very, very fortunate right now with the opportunity I have been granted or given. Um. And, you know, maybe, maybe in the future I will kind of uh I'm basically, I'm working for someone. I'm working for somebody on YouTube and um maybe in the future I will disclose more information, but um just right now, it's not even that it has to be hush hush, it's just there's not really a lot of point in talking about it, but but yeah, yeah, very, very fortunate right now. Don't let me keep you. Apparently everyone has gone. No, there's still some people watching. Have a good one. But I am gonna end it though for all. I'm gonna give, it's 11:31 by my clock. I'm gonna give it 60 more seconds. Uh, if you have the questions, uh, let me know and I will gladly answer, but if not, we will start wrapping up here. Hey, man, we'll watch Bolt Hop the Globe. Heck, yeah. That's my plan, because I, because the thing is like my plan, obviously I'm kind of in limbo right now because of of, you know, not being able to travel, but that's the cool thing. Um, there's a couple of places I can go right now um and and be safe about it, because I will A be vaccinated, um, because I I get my second vaccine here shortly. Um, and then also I'll travel with a, you know, a mask and whatever precautions I need to take, but um, so I can go to like Mexico and like, I think I can go to like Panama and like uh maybe Ecuador, I think Brazil, somewhere in South America. Um, and uh and then Mexico. And then Iceland. That's like the, the only places I can go, so I'm really hoping for uh really hoping for, obviously for Japan to open, that's gonna be top priority. Um, Vietnam is is very, very, very high on my list. Um. Trying to think of where else like in in particular, I really want to go to Egypt. Um. To see like the the pyramids and stuff and then uh I don't know if I'd put it in like a top five, though, like if I have top five would be Japan, Japan and Vietnam for sure. And then it kind of gets a little hazy after there, perhaps uh see the visits and onsen episode. Saying, um. Yeah, I don't know. It it's just kind of very it varies. Um, and then, I mean, I can travel within the United States. I still, I'm gonna do the um most isolated town in the in the United States. I'm gonna do that. I want to do some stuff like that because there's still a lot of stuff like, obviously, traveling the world is awesome, but the United States is so huge. There's a lot of stuff here that um. There's, there's a lot of stuff here that we can see, like, you don't have to travel the world necessarily, but I'm obviously I want to, um, but yeah. All right. So, cool. Well, hey, next episode of our next episode, next time I jump on live, we'll like doing if if it's a live, like, uh, study type of thing. We're gonna delete the Anki cards, start anew. We're just gonna refresh Anki completely, um, and we'll start doing like a in-video sentence mining and uh see how that goes. I think that'll go pretty well. And uh, that's, that's what we'll do, and I think that'll be really, really cool. So, but I am going to end the stream here. Thanks, everybody for coming out and hanging out and chatting. Thanks for the constructive criticism and also the acceptance of my responses to criticism and not just jumping out and not chatting or whatever, like, I really appreciate the way the chat um, went tonight. I really, really appreciate that. So uh, thank you all so, so much, and thank you for the continued support. Japan has to happen. Yes, it does. Japan has to happen. Yes, it does. As soon, literally, the moment they're like, yo, we're, like, we're open, um, my trips, everything that I have planned will be pushed back an additional month, and like, Japan will be hotshot into the front of the list, so it's, it's happening. Don't worry. Um, yeah, so, but, um, but yeah, thanks, everybody, for joining. I appreciate the continued support, uh, even in the times of me not uploading a lot, um, I, my channel has still grown when I've not. You guys have been there to support, and that's really, really incredible, and it makes me feel awesome, and I'm excited. I'm excited to continue learning Japanese and talking to you all about that and my language journeys, and I'm excited to bring you guys my, uh, my travels around the world, uh, because those will also have language associated with them as well. For example, the studying just a touch of Icelandic before I go to Iceland, so, thanks, everybody. I hope you enjoyed. I enjoyed the conversations, and, um, I will see you all very, very soon, so I will see you later.